And welcome everyone this evening to the Monday, August 20, 2012 meeting of the Williamson County Board of Education. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone to please silence or turn off your cell phones or any other electronic devices. I'd like to thank Officer Nikki Osborne for being here this evening to provide our security. Thank you very much. We appreciate your attendance. First item on the agenda is the pledge. If you would please stand and join Board Member Susan Graham for the pledge, and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Before we move forward with approval of the agenda, board members at your place, you had this evening a replacement page for page three, which was the board goals. You also had a replacement page for page fifteen, which is the proposed meeting schedule of the board, and a replacement for page fifty-three, which is the additional special education teachers budget amendment. Are there any other corrections before we move forward? Mr. Lee?
Are you, excuse me, are you asking if there are any other corrections at this time to anything on the consent? Or is your question more narrow than that?
If you need to make a change to an item on the consent...
It's not a change. I didn't know if we had made a change in any of the other documentation before it got approved as it's provided in the books. For example, we had talked about the annual agenda, and I didn't know if there was any changes we landed on, and I do not recall. But since there wasn't a handout, I just wanted to make sure. And then, the other one was with respect to board parameters. I didn't know if there was anything that's different than what is in the materials for purposes of passing the consent agenda. That was my question.
Okay.
And I'll try to respond, Mr. Lee, as it relates to the board of parameters. I think I have a good understanding of where the board is and your thinking is as it relates to each semester, and believe I can operate within those, that understanding without the establishment of parameters. I hope that clarifies.
That's absolutely in keeping with what we discussed. I was just wanting to make sure that it wasn't inconsistent with whatever the handouts were, so if the consent agenda reflects what had been handed up prior to the discussion, there wasn't any disconnect. That's all. Okay. Thank you.
And before we move forward, I missed an important step tonight. If you would please register your attendance and confirm it on your controller. Thank you. We have ten board members present and two absent. Thank you. Now that we've taken care of that piece of housekeeping, would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda? Motion for Ms. Moore, second for Mr. Welch. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. As part of that approval of the agenda, we approved on the consent, the recommendations for the field trip fee request, the board goals, the school board annual agenda for 2012-13, the school board meeting dates for 2012-13, the sick leave bank trustees for 2012-13, the board parameters of the 2013-14 calendar, and outstanding purchase orders for school activity funds. Next item on the agenda is public comment. We have three individuals who have signed up to address the board this evening. When I call your name, if you would please step to the podium, give us your name and address. You have a minute and a half to address the board. Mr. Anderson, who sits to my right, is a timekeeper. He has a timer, and when you hear the beep, if you would please conclude your comments, we would appreciate it. First individual is Charles Farmer.
Good evening, board. The purpose of my comments are specifically for Ms. Moore, on behalf of Summit High School, our students, our faculty, our staff, our parents. I just wanted to thank you for your service and support to our, our family down there, and for always looking after us, coming to student events, serving on our Career Tech Board, calling me for opinions. I just wanted to take time today, with this being your last day, to thank you publicly for all that you've done for Summit.
Thank you. Next individual is Norris Alderson.
I am Norris Alderson, and I'm president of the McCase Mill Master Homeowners Association Board of Directors. McCase Mill is a community of thirteen hundred and thirty-six homes, with the majority being single-family. The master board represents all and, as such, supports Haddon Hall children, having the same choices as are now provided the other twelve hundred and fifty-six homes in our community. Recently, the master association posted on our Facebook page a situation Haddon Hall parents face in having their children attend three different schools their first six years of school. The other parents of McCase Mill recognize that this impacts their children and them personally, as they will associate with their friends, both children and parents, only through non-school activities. I ask that you consider the Haddon Hall situation in the context of your own children or your grandchildren. What is in the best interest of the children and the community? The fifty-three currently occupied homes in Haddon Hall have fifteen elementary-aged children in public schools. Using the same ratio, when all eighty homes are occupied, the number of children attending public schools would be twenty-three. The question for you as board members becomes, should we provide the same opportunity for these twenty-three children as part of their community, both at school and in their non-school activities? The master association board of directors and McCase Mill parents support equal consideration for all the children of our community. Thank you for the opportunity to present our view on this issue.
Thank you. Next individual is Brian Fingler.
I'm Brian Fingler. I live in Haddon Hall, as you guys already know. It was very, put a smile to my face to come to the work session on Thursday and see the board in 2007 focus on the right aspect of this discussion. For twenty minutes, we heard the board talk about what this means to the children of McCase Mill, what it means for the children of Haddon Hall to be separated from the other kids in the neighborhood, and they voted eleven to one in favor of allowing our kids to attend Page Middle School so that they could make that transition earlier. It's also been very frustrating since then to hear this current board frame the discussion as numbers and slippery slopes and precedence. I hope that the school board recognizes the importance of community and what that means to the children, and that growth of the area is going to be an issue going forward for the next foreseeable future. Whether our fifteen children are included in Clovercroft, growth is still going to be an issue, whether we are or aren't. Whether you vote yes or no on this measure, other neighborhoods are going to come to you with zoning issues. Zoning issues aren't going away. Don't let this situation and voting down this situation be an excuse to try to prevent further zoning issues from coming up, because they will. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening. Move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. Good to see you this evening. I too would like to take just a moment to thank those of you that will be leaving the board after this evening for your service, and I know Ms. Anderson will make some additional comments. So, on my behalf and on behalf of the staff members, thank you so much for your service to the boys and girls of Williamson County Schools. I'd like to report just a little bit about our opening of school and share with you a figure, if I can get my figure back up. As of today, our enrollment is thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fourteen students, three-two-eight-one-four, and that is up significantly from last year. We ended last year at thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-four. So, last year we ended at thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-four students, and as of today, close of business, we are at thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fourteen students. I will say that we expect a good number of additional students to enroll in our schools. I was meeting with families today who have children that they have not either enrolled or re-enrolled into our school system for various reasons, and so I do expect that number to approach and/or exceed thirty-three thousand students this year, which will bring our enrollment to a record number, which it already is a record number. The opening of school went extremely well. Each of the seven school days that we have had have had an attendance rate of above ninety-seven percent, so our students are coming to school as we expect them to. We have had no incidents that are significant to report as it relates to the operations of our school system. We've had a kid or two get on the wrong bus along the way, but we've managed to, to get them back to their home school or get them back on the right school bus. So, I want to publicly thank all the staff members, the principals, the teachers, and everybody in the organization for making school go so smoothly. And then finally, I would like to make a public comment. On Wednesday of this week, the state is expected to release last year's ACT scores. I'm really looking forward to the unveiling of that data, as I believe that this school district and the boys and girls of Williamson County will have a lot to be proud of. Long story short, our scores will reflect that they're the highest they have ever been in this district's history, and I'm very proud and thankful for that. At this time, I'd ask for Mr. Wimberly to give a brief report on our progress as it relates to the education foundation.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. I'd like to start by saying that it was clear to me when we had our first meeting a week ago that this board took quite seriously the appointment of the members on the steering committee, because you certainly put on the committee some very strong people who, who are quite dedicated to establishing a good foundation for an education foundation. As, as we were going around the table introducing ourselves, I was struck by several things. One was the diversity and the credentials of the members of the steering committee. Very impressive. Another was the enthusiasm for the task at hand. But it was also striking to me that, to a one, everyone commented about the timing for setting up an education foundation and the strong belief that, that the community is prepared for this. In fact, I think it's fair to say the steering committee accepted the challenge that you gave, that we step up the timetable for getting the foundation started rather significantly, and I think it's an enthusiastic group who will, will move quickly. However, there were some fundamental things that we talked about and will continue to work on. One is to establish what the real value proposition is that this foundation could offer to certainly the, the students, to the school system, but also to the community as a whole. So, the steering committee will be working on that quite diligently. We do need input from the board, from the public, and our next meeting is on September seventh, and I would encourage people to, to let us hear from you. Ms. Moore and Ms. Graham, who are coming off the school board, are on the steering committee, and I'm sure they would join me in saying, please, let us know. We've got a, a lot of work to do to, to establish this value proposition for the community in a way that will encourage the public to support it and donors to support it. Anything I should add?
Okay.
And thanks for this opportunity.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
With the board's permission, I'd invite Mrs. Carol Birdsong to come forward and let us recognize some very important people in our organization. Ms. Birdsong?
Thank you. We are going to start with a student tonight, a student athlete. And I might need your help, Tim, because my clicker doesn't want to work. Thank you. And this is pretty cool. Summit High School is our first honoree for the school year. His name is Dale Burdick, and he is a junior this year. And he was the only student athlete in the state of Tennessee selected to participate on the Team USA Seventeen-and-Under baseball team. And also impressive, Dale has recently committed to attend Mississippi State University to play collegiate baseball. His coach is Chad Kirby. Now, we are going to honor our schools who were recognized during the Second Annual Superintendent's Banquet, which was held recently, and we have six schools that we are honoring. We're going to start at the, with academic achievement. This is our high school. Ravenwood High School was honored for academic achievement at the superintendent's banquet. At the middle school level, Brentwood Middle School, and Bill Harland, who is here with us this evening, recognized for academic achievement. Brentwood High School, Brentwood Middle School actually won this award two years in a row. At the elementary school lever, Clovercroft Elementary School, I saw Dr. Lechance here as well. Clovercroft was honored for academic achievement. We had three schools we also honored for academic growth. At the high school level, Page High School and Dr. Andre Anthony. At the middle school level, Grassland Middle School and Dr. Lily Lefler, honored for academic growth. And at the elementary school level, Julie Sparrow and Edmondson Elementary School. And those are our honorees for our first school board meeting of the 2012-2013 school year. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Birdsong.
Madam Chair, that completes my report.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a board chairman's report. I'll remind board members that we have a retreat on Saturday. We'll begin at eight o'clock. I will send you some information tomorrow, along with some homework to do before we begin that meeting. We have a good number of principals and staff in the audience. If you all would stand and let us welcome you. Thank you so much for being here tonight. We appreciate your attendance and your support. Everyone has at their place the item that we all look forward to receiving each year. It is our Williamson County calendar. And I want to thank the Williamson County Medical Center for once again putting this together for us and featuring student artwork. It's always a nice addition to have and help keep us organized. We also have a little packet at your place that has some cards that you can hand out when you're in the community about the BYOT initiative, and some other useful information. And I would like to ask Mr. Greer, Ms. Moore, and Ms. Graham, if you all just meet me down front for a second.
Well, tonight is a, is a bittersweet night. As we said, we're not going to say goodbye. We're just going to say, see you all later.
There's the homework.
There goes the homework part. On behalf of the board and the entire district, I want to say to each of you how very much I appreciate your service and your dedication to this community. You have been part of a wonderful group of people. We've made such great strides over the past few years, and we could not have done it without each and every one of you. Your, your service to this community has been tremendous. As you began and you leave to renew a career, start a new one, and be a granddaddy. And she's here tonight, in case anyone wants to see this gorgeous little baby over here behind my shoulder. Just thank you, and there's not enough words to express our gratitude. And I have... Oh, thank you. I was about to panic. I have a small memento for each of you. I'd like to remind you of their service. And I want to thank you all. I love you so much. It's going like saying your words. No pressure. I'll go. Okay. This, it has been a pleasure working on the board, and this is bittersweet. And I have to say, it's kind of ironic. I'm the school board member. Oops, wrong, wrong mine. That was rezoned. But this has been a pleasure, and this is a great board to work with, and I'm actually personally pretty excited because I know I'm leaving District Three in really good hands. PJ Mazzaro will do a great job. So, I just wish you all lots of luck. It's been a great learning experience.
I think bittersweet is probably the word of the night for all of us. We had great dreams, and we've seen a lot of great things happen in this district while we've been here. I know that, I want to thank the voters of District Seven for giving me this opportunity. I've been both honored and humbled by the opportunity to serve not only them, but to serve the children of Williamson County, and that's where the heart of it all lies. I wish all of you the best of luck. Don't stop dreaming. Don't stop believing in all that we can be and all that we can do. The opportunities are limitless for this school district, and I want to encourage all of you to keep trying and keep striving. I don't leave education tonight. You just can't turn off a love for what education can do for a community and what it can do for each and every child. So, I'll still be there, part of the foundation, back active in the PTO, and still caring about what happens in our school district. So, thank you for the opportunity to travel with each of you these last four years. It's been an incredible journey, and I look forward to seeing all that you all aspire to over the next future. Thank you.
I too would like to thank this board. It's been an honor to work with each one of you, but I'd also like to thank District One for giving me the opportunity to serve them for the past eight years on this board. And I believe we are, I'm stepping down, but we have a great person stepping in with Ken Peterson taking over. He'll do a wonderful job. It's just been an honor, and I thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is item 4A1. This is board policy revisions for first reading. It's board policy 1.100, school board legal status and authority. This is located on page forty-five. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, I do recommend approval of this first reading.
A motion for Ms. Mills. Second for Ms. Moore. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote? Motion passes. Next item is 4A2, board policy 6.3061, student conduct and discipline. This is on page forty-seven. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. I do recommend approval of this at first reading. Most of this language changes relates to changes in, in law.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Graham. Second for Ms. Moore. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is ten yes, zero no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4A3, 6.3131, student aggressive behavior management. This is located on page forty-nine. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. I do recommend deletion of this policy. These are items that are governed by individual IEPs and by the policy that you just approved at first reading.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion by Ms. Mills. Second by Ms. Vogt. Mr. Lee?
Just a clarification question from Mr. Golden, that it is not premature to delete this when we've only had first reading as opposed to the second reading of the other policy.
Deletion is a substantive change and actually takes two votes as well.
Thank you.
Would you like to repeat what you just said?
A deletion is a substantive change and actually takes two votes as well.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is ten yes, zero no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4B1. This is additional special education teachers budget amendment located on page fifty-three. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. This is actually a replacement page. It should be a green document that you have received. There is a need due to both student needs and staffing ratios to add some staff members. You can see in the first whereas, based on where students are enrolled and will attend class at the different schools within the county. It has been determined that we need two additional special education teachers beyond those that were originally budgeted in the 2012-13 school year and 1.5 additional guidance counselors to maintain board standards. And whereas we are in need of a full-time interim assistant principal to cover positions on leave for half a year at two different schools at different times, I do recommend your approval of this revised resolution.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Welch. Second for Ms. Moore. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is ten yes, zero no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4B2, High Schools That Work Grant for Franklin High School on page fifty-five. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. This is good news for Franklin High School. They applied for and have received a High Schools That Works program grant in the amount of $6,000. This resolution accounts for those monies.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Moore. Second for Ms. Vogt. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is ten yes, zero no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4B, excuse me, 4C1, the 2012 Five-Year Capital Plan on page fifty-seven. on page 57. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Board members, this relates to a request for generators at Longview Elementary and Nolansville Elementary School. Mrs. Holman has identified some contingency funds from previous construction and capital expenditure projects. We're requesting to move it into the appropriate line item so that we can take care of these two generators.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Moore. Second for Ms. Mills. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4C1, The Conveyance of the Pinewood Property to Williamson County. This is located on page 59. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Board members, this is an agreement between us and the Williamson County Government where we would provide the deed to the old Pinewood School. We have reached an agreement where we would be able to continue using the facility for storage. I do recommend your approval of this. Mr. Golden, the Board Attorney, has drafted this agreement.
Would someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Greer. Second for Ms. Mills. Mr. Lee?
No, thank you.
Oh, you did not wish to speak?
No, it was inadvertent.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4E, Recommended Changes to the Classified Pay Plan. This is located on page 65. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Board members, as we discussed in the work session, Mrs. Looney has identified several positions where we have significant pay compression. And we're trying to slowly and methodically go through the classified pay schedule to make some adjustments as we're able to. And the proposal tonight allows us to do that. We are going to have to complete a more comprehensive review and come up with a long-term solution to this at some point in time in the future. But I do recommend approval of this adjustment.
Would someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Vogt. Second for Ms. Moore. Is there any discussion? Ms. Graham?
Dr. Looney, what will be the implications of this on our budget for this year?
Very minimal, Ms. Graham.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4F, The Proposed Contract with Scholastic. This information is located on page 73. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Board members, this is a proposed contract with Scholastic, otherwise known as REED 180. You have been funding REED 180 positions in our schools for a number of years. There's a need to retrain staff members and to reinvigorate that program to make sure we're getting full utilization from it. I do recommend your approval of this expenditure.
Would someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Graham. Second for Mr. Greer. Mr. Lee?
Yes. My question is for Mr. Golden. Is it requisite that the Board vote on this? And if it is, has the governing law aspect been addressed yet? Or is that something that we would need to make a motion to amend given that's not what's on the paper in front of us?
The reason this is on for the Board to discuss is because Board Policy 1.303 requires the Board to approve any contracts that call for a consultant to be paid $10,000 or more. So that's what you were approving, that we enter into an agreement with a consultant, in this case, a professional development consultant, for a cost of $10,000. Mr. Squires has reviewed the contract and instructed the curriculum department to ensure that the governing law in paragraph 13 was Tennessee and that the jurisdiction was Tennessee as well. And so that was an inadvertence in the document that was placed before the Board in the packet. So as approved by the Board, Tennessee will be the governing law and the jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Mr. Welch?
Thank you. Dr. Looney, you mentioned that this program has been underutilized in the past. I wonder if you could expand on why is that? And what steps do you plan on taking to ensure that that doesn't happen going forward?
Yes, sir. I've directed staff members to do a complete analysis of our utilization of not only the program, REED 180, but also the teaching units that are assigned to the schools. And what has happened with the program, I suppose, is, as with many things, over time, the effectiveness of the program gets compromised because of other competing interests. And because the Board has committed a substantial amount of money through personnel for this program, we felt it required a second look. We determined that it wasn't being utilized as effectively as we had hoped, primarily using student achievement data to do that analysis. And, you know, our position, or my position with staff has been if we're going to have a program and/or product, then we need to utilize it with fidelity moving forward. And in our analysis, we determined that in order to do that, because it's been such a long period of time since everybody was trained on how to effectively use the program, we essentially need to reboot the program and go through training. Many of the people that were originally here and trained are no longer with the district. And so perhaps one of the shortcomings in the implementation of the program historically has been that we haven't had ongoing, continuous professional development for this specific program.
Are you comfortable that this is the proper program? Or is this part of the process to decide that?
I'm very comfortable with the product itself. REED 180 is a research-based reading intervention program targeted for high-risk kids, particularly at the middle and high school level that are significantly behind in reading. The data is very strong as far as getting results, but it will only work if we're implementing it correctly. What I can say is I don't think we've been implementing it correctly. And this is going to allow us to correct that.
Thank you.
Ms. Graham?
Dr. Looney, in our budget each year, some schools have a designated REED 180 position. For those schools that do not have that position, will they still have access to this program? And their students have access?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, all of our schools have access. They've been using it at different degrees of implementation. Many of our special education students have been accessing the program. We also have, as you know, several of our schools have a position that is budgeted specifically for this program. But when I analyzed, or when the staff analyzed how many students were actually served versus how much time the students spent in the program, it wasn't satisfactory to me. And so therefore, we're trying to restart the program in an effective way.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is 4G, Requests for Out-of-Zone Exception for Haddon Hall Elementary Students. This information is on page 85. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Board members, I'd like to give a little bit of background before I make my recommendation. This item came before you as a result of some public input at a previous meeting. Thereafter, you asked me to analyze the situation and come up with a recommendation. My recommendation tonight is to not grant a zoning exception to the residents of, or the students that live in Haddon Hall. As you know, Haddon Hall exists within the legal district lines of Franklin Special School District. And as I previously indicated to you, I have two concerns. The first one is a philosophical or a governance issue, and that is whether this Board holds the position that you should govern students that do not exist in our boundaries. If we were to open Haddon Hall, then I think there would be valid, or could be valid, arguments made that we would not only need to open other communities within Williamson County, but perhaps adjoining counties that happen to have neighborhoods that cross county lines. And so for that reason, and because I am extremely concerned about our rapid growth, particularly at Clovercroft Elementary School, last time I looked, it was 745 students, which is significantly higher than we had anticipated, which simply means that we'll be at or above capacity sooner in our five-year plan than we had hoped. And I certainly am empathetic to the fact that these students are part of a neighborhood that's large. But that section of the neighborhood was built with the full knowledge that it existed in the Franklin Special School District lines. And I don't feel comfortable recommending making an exception in this case.
Would someone like to make a motion? I need to know what your motion is. Making a motion that we do not permit the out-of-zone exception? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. Let me... We need to get a second and get it on the floor.
Second.
Second for Ms. Mills. Mr. Lee?
I just have a clarifying question for Mr. Golden as to whether or not it's appropriate motion or not in the sense that we often do not, I can't think of any time in fact, that we do motions to enforce our current policies we already have. So a motion not to permit is consistent with the policy that is already in place. So I'm not sure what the motion is as opposed to no motion at all. I would understand a motion for an exception to policy. But I would think that to follow the superintendent's recommendation would be to do nothing. And so that's the clarification I'm asking.
Well, legally, either way would work. You can make a motion to deny it, and it would have the same effect. Now, of course, as you all know, it takes seven votes for something to pass under Tennessee law for this Board. And so that is a little bit of a nuance that differs somewhat from Robert's Rules of Order. So this motion could potentially fail, and yet the request still not be granted because the existing policy will not allow it. So it can be made, and it can be voted on. But if it does not pass, it does not resolve the underlying issue. I think that gets to what you're asking.
It seems, yes, it does. I mean, it just seems confusing to me because if there was a failure to have seven votes, it seems the implication would be then that it was permitted, but the policy still would not permit that.
Now, one impact it does have under Robert's rules, if this passes, it affects how something is brought back potentially to the Board at some later date. If something fails for lack of a motion, any Board member can bring something back. Under Robert's rules, someone voting on the, in essence, winning side could bring something back later if they have a change of mind. So there is a little bit of a distinction in that case.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore?
Would it help if I withdrew that motion?
From my perspective as attorney for the Board, it's your choice. If you'd like to make it, discuss it in the Board vote, that's fine. If you want to withdraw it, that's fine, too. It's either way.
So if I withdraw this, do we vote?
Absent another motion, the Board would not vote. It would take another vote. I mean, it would take another motion.
Okay. I will withdraw the motion.
And Ms. Mills?
I'll withdraw the second.
Okay. So absent of a motion to take any type of action on this request, supports our Board policy that we will not grant this exception. Seeing that there are none, this dies for lack of a motion. So this request has not been honored. That concludes the business on this evening's agenda. I'd like to thank everyone for being here. And this meeting is adjourned.